And before we, before we reconvene the hearing, I want to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 12th.
Is there a second? Okay, I'll second. Gee, thanks Charlie.
I do have one correction that I noticed on page three. A little more than halfway down, David Toth and Daniel Lucetti. In both of those, the word boring pit is mentioned. I believe it should be borrow pit. Is that correct, Daniel? That would be the correct term?
Yes, Daniel is shaking his head.
Okay, okay. So where it says boring pit in two consecutive lines should be borrow, B O R R O W pit.
The other corrections to the minutes? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Charlie?
I.
Alan?
You haven't appointed me a voting member yet.
I think you were still a voting member from the last time, but I will.
I agree, but I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
I will reappoint you a voting member this ZBA tonight's meeting, Alan.
In that case, I say aye.
Martine Badger?
Aye.
David Toth, aye. I'd like to reconvene the public hearing from last time. We were at the point where the chair was going to summarize the, summarize the, the main points of the meeting. I wanted to thank everyone for indulging me because it was a, because this is a complicated case. And I wanted to review my notes and review the minutes of the meeting before I presented a summary. What I will do is go over, the summary I put together is by, by, by the criteria. And so I'm going to go over each criteria and then ask if there are any additions or deletions that anyone wants to make to the summary. The first criteria is that the specific site is an appropriate location for the intended use or structure. The land for the proposed gravel pit quarry is vacant wooden lot, 85 acres in size. It's located in the rural residential zone at the end of West Street. A portion of the land is located within the wellhead protection area. The land is currently not in use. There are butters in conservation land to the north. Butters to the east on residential land and a commercial district to the south. A portion of the land is in the commercial district. The proposed excavation would be approximately 11.5 acres in the central portion of the land. There is currently no design for the use of the property. However, it will consist of storage areas and stockpiles for gravel, crushed stone and other types of aggregates and upon to provide and retain water. The design will adhere to the state's excavation regulations, the town's excavation regulations, and the DES alteration of terrain permit regulations. There will be a stockpile on West Street. There is evidence of excavation on the northern portion of the site. The land appears to have been used as a borrow pit for the construction of I-93. The applicant did not find records concerning, confirming that the site was a borrow pit. The applicant has not done borings or other engineering studies to determine whether the site will serve as a gravel pit slash quarry. A portion of the land on the southern end is in the commercial district and is accessed via West Street, which is part of the commercial district. There is a semi-circular hill that rises to approximately 830 feet at the southern end, the West Street end of the property. This hill could serve as a buffer between the proposed site, which is at an elevation of approximately 530 feet and the rest of the rural residential zone and the businesses on West Street. The hill slopes steeply towards West Street, somewhat more gradually towards I-93. This may mean that the access road would have to be cut deeply into the side of the hill, especially at the West Street end, where the land is on the wellhead protection area. The proposed site will not be visible from West Street. The service road and possibly the gravel pit quarry could be visible from I-93. The site may also be visible from certain areas of Bridgewater, Wood and Woods and the Glidden Conservation Area. Does anyone have anything they would like to add or delete from there?
I think one note in that first paragraph. I think you mentioned a butters to the east on residential land. I think it's important to note that that residential land is also under conservation status.
Okay. Okay. Criteria number two, will the use be compatible to neighboring land uses? While a portion of the land at the southern end is in the commercial district, most of the land is in the rural residential zone. The business in the, businesses in the commercial district include Ashland, Ashland Lumber, and Irving Station and Burger King, all of which are located on the southern end of West Street near Route 3 slash 25. Common Man Commons, a senior living facility, Comfort Inn and a storage facility that are located towards the northern end of West Street. I probably should have added in there that there are also a number of residences on the northern, on the northern end of West Street as well. The applicant stated that the proposed project would be an additional commercial use of the land in this area and that there would be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Ryan Cluthier of the Southern New Hampshire Services, which is the owner of Common Man Commons, stated that he believes the project is not compatible with the elderly housing project due to concerns about traffic, public safety, dust, debris, air pollution, noise, vibration, and the structural integrity of the buildings, all of which would be adversely, adversely affected, all of which would adversely affect the lives and lifestyles of the seniors who reside at Common Man Commons. Would anyone like to add or delete anything from this portion? Criteria number three, the property values in the zone and the surrounding area will not be reduced by such a use. The applicant did not provide evidence that property values would not be reduced by the proposed project, but offered to obtain a, an assessment of property values. Anything anyone would like to add to this section? Criteria number four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. The applicant stated that all internal roads would be safe for vehicular traffic and that pedestrian traffic in that area would be very limited. The applicant also stated that vehicular traffic on West Street would be consistent with current use. Trucks from Hill's Construction already use the Irving Station and Ashland Lumber. The applicant estimated that traffic would consist of between 10 and 20 trucks per day, depending on project requirements. Ryan Cluthier stated that the additional traffic from heavy trucks would increase the risk for senior drivers and pedestrians. Any additions in that section? Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed site. The applicant stated that necessary, necessary facilities and equipment needed to operate a gravel pit would be provided. The applicant would also meet state and local excavation requirements, DES and DOT permitting requirements. Any additions to this section? The proposed use will comply with the minimum lot size, frontage and setback requirements. The applicant has stated that the proposed use will comply with minimum lot size, frontage and setback requirements. Any addition to this? Existing road and highways are capable of carrying additional traffic. The applicant has stated that there will be minimal traffic and has estimated that there could be between 10 and 20 trucks per day, as I stated before. The applicant has also stated that West Street already supports larger commercial uses and that the road meets the 12-foot travel lanes recommended for commercial use by A S H T O, geometric design of highways. Susan Slack, principal planner for LRPC, stated that there could be traffic issues at the intersection of West Street and Route 3-25, which is close to I-93 entrances and exits. Any additional additions or deletions to that section? Does anyone have any further, further comments they would like to be, make before we close the hearing?
Both Ryan Cluthier and Regina Buto are here from Southern New Hampshire Services. I wonder if they may have anything to add?
This is Ryan Cluthier from Southern New Hampshire Services. I don't have anything to add, but appreciate the, the opportunity. Thank you.
In that case, I will bring the public hearing to a close. At this time, I'd like to start the deliberations by the, by the ZBA. We might use the summary that I just made as a starting point to discuss the information that we have been presented that supports or does not support the, the criteria and, and, and then, and then vote on, vote on each of the criteria individually. When we do get to the voting portion of this, each of us needs to vote yea or nay and explain the, explain the reasons and the facts that we based our decision on, so that we have that in the, in the public record. The first criteria again is, does this, the, is designed to determine whether the site is an appropriate location for the intended use or structure. Okay, we know that the proposal is to place a gravel pit slash quarry in the, in the rural residential area with zone, which is north of West Street.
I guess I'll start off, I'll start off. I have concerns about the, the particular piece of land. It's on both the northern end and the southern end of the property. Our aquifer that we draw our water from overlaps both ends of the property. And the northern end, it overlaps it significantly. But I think even more important to me is the fact that our wellhead protection area also is overlapped by this property. And it actually comes into more towards the center of the property, which conceivably could overlap the area that they would be doing the excavation in. So that's my first concern is the location of the aquifer and the wellhead protection area. My second, my second concern is that while West Street is commercial, we know that. And most of the heavier use areas are at the lower end of West Street. What's up at the northern end of West Street? For instance, just beyond the Comfort Inn are two private residences. And across from those is the Common Man Commons, which is the elderly housing area. So the closest part of West Street to this excavation site and to the access road that would be going in and out with this traffic is actually in more of a residential portion of West Street than the lower part. So those are two of my concerns.
I'd like to comment, Dave, if you, you agree? One, I believe the site is potentially a very successful development site for the use that has been proposed. It may in fact turn out to be a economically very sound investment as a quarry, as the natural resources there lend themselves to that type of development. I note that the planning board, the New Hampshire DOT, perhaps other jurisdictions, will weigh in on the amelioration of many of the issues that have been presented, some of which Martine just expressed, and that, that these ameliorations have the potential of being successfully resolved in favor of the applicant. And on that basis, I, I think on this criteria, I would, I'm, I'm very optimistic that I, I think this could go forward.
Alan?
Martine has expressed my concerns. I will just reiterate my, my issues that it is within the wellhead protection area. And any increased traffic flow on West Street is a potential problem.
Like to comment on, on Alan's note there that, you know, we're very early in this process. It's very unusual, certainly for me, to be reviewing an applicant where the planning board hasn't been involved, where the engineering is not complete, where there has not been a, a serious attempt to look at the items that need amelioration, including the road. I think potentially, you know, this will be a benefit to the town of Ashland. And one of the things that may come out of this is that West Street may even be improved in the process. We all know it needs sidewalks and, and maybe even some, some further development for heavy traffic. I, I don't think that the fact that at this moment, you know, the, the street may or may not be appropriate for the use because we don't really know exactly what that use is based on the applicant's, you know, presentation. That all has to be defined. And I think that for us to take positions that, you know, these are things that cannot be resolved at this very early stage is, is very activist for, for a zoning board. I, I think as for myself, I feel necessary only to limit myself to the exact criteria of the, the seven points and whether or not they can go forward. And as I say, whether or not it's likely that a planning board or other jurisdictions that come to bear on this process can design solutions that make this a successful application.
Yeah, I, I, I share, I, I share Martine's concerns and Alan's concerns and, and also Charlie's reflection that, on the potential for this property. But I do have a problem with the fact that there really hasn't been anything done in terms of design or, or, or studies to confirm whether this will actually serve as a, a good site for a gravel pit and quarry. And I think I would have liked to have seen at least some, some, some information in that, to confirm that, to confirm that the potential that Charlie is, is, is talking about. Does anybody have any other comments on criteria one? Okay, let's look at criteria two, will the use be compatible with neighboring land uses? Do you want to begin again, Martine?
Okay. Okay, again, West Street is commercial, its own commercial. So at the lower end of West Street, you get the Ashland Lumber traffic in and out. You get the Irving traffic in and out. Some traffic in and out from Burger King. Most of those types of, most of those businesses though, I mean, you've got Burger King, which is in food service. You've got a couple of buildings in among, in there that have got offices in it. Ashland Lumber has traffic in and out, but it's also retail. The types of commercial businesses at that lower end of West Street are very different from the type of activity that is in a gravel pit quarry area. Gravel pit quarry is a much more intensive, much more invasive type of use in contrast to the lower portion. Again, the north of that particular property and east of that property is conservation area. I just don't feel that a quarry area in that area is conducive to the other types of businesses. And again, as I mentioned previously, there is a, there are residential areas along that street, even all the way down on the east side of West Street. There are houses in among the businesses that are there. So I just, I just do not, I'm not comfortable with the compatibility with the surrounding businesses and residents.
Comment, David. One of the things I note is that it's a very large piece of property and the footprint on the property is, it's only a partial use of the property. I was looking at that property and also there's a topography there with a kind of a, a hill that sort of, I think with proper engineering can be used to kind of shield any commercial or industrial use of that site from interference with surrounding properties. So on that basis, I, I don't think, in my mind, it's significant that, you know, a quarry isn't necessarily the same as a Burger King or a storage facility. But once again, this is very early on. I think good engineering will allow the applicant to develop this site and ameliorate those, those issues of compatibility.
Alan?
It would be different if it totally hit the area, which it does not. It, it's one of these unfortunate things that we have so many multipurpose uses in that area. I guess it's a, it's a point to be argued whether it fits or it doesn't. I'm not going to have an opinion at this moment on it and we'll go forward.
I, I think I have, I have two points here. One, I think that, that agrees with Martine. Most of the activity that takes place in the commercial district is, is on the southern end. The traffic on the northern end is mostly, is mostly cars going in and out of the Common Man Commons and the, the hotel or the motel and the storage unit, some small trucks going into the storage unit. But this would obviously, this would obviously increase the traffic, heavy truck traffic on the northern end of, of West Street, which I don't feel is compatible with, with those entities, especially Common Man Commons. The second thing is that, and, and again agreeing with Martine is, is that this is really more of an industrial use rather than a, rather than a commercial use. And perhaps the, perhaps the, the hill or the, the small mountain that, that sort of encloses or encapsulates the, the proposed site with engineering could provide a buffer of noise and. and dust. But, but since there is, you know, since there is ledge running throughout that whole area, the vibration from blasting could affect the, could affect the houses that are, that are much closer to the site, the hotel and potentially Common Man Commons. So those are my concerns. Number three, the property values in the zone and the surrounding area will not be reduced by such use. I can, I can start off by saying that, as it says here, there hasn't been an evaluation to determine whether property values will be affected or not. I think the argument made by the applicant is there is that, well, there are other commercial uses there. So it really shouldn't affect property values, except again, that those commercial uses are at the southern end of the, of the, of the of the street. And it remains to be seen that, so you know, that, that an industrial use of that land would, would, would affect the property values of the homeowners that are much closer to that use. So I would have to see, I would have to see an evaluation, a real estate evaluation of that to be able to answer that question.
Yeah, we really don't have any information on that at all.
Well, I just have a quick comment on property values. Economic development, I think, from a revenue point of view, would benefit the town of Ashland. And I'm clearly aware that as the town generates sources of revenue, it tends to relieve the tax burden on everybody else. And property values and taxes go hand in hand. As taxes go up, property values go down. As taxes go down relative to the activity of the town, property values go up. So I think it's, you know, kind of a little short sighted to say, well, you know, the, what is the impact of this on property values? I think you have to look at the long-term impact that says, hey, the town can benefit from the revenue and that ultimately that eases the tax burden.
Other comments?
No, not on that.
Okay, uh, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
Again, I'm not sure about the traffic, the additional traffic on West Street. Again, the upper part of West Street is where there are, there is more residential use up there, including the Common Man Commons. I know the residents are out there walking often. They're in and out of there with their cars a lot. It is, while I understand the road is wide enough to handle the two, two-way traffic. I understand the criteria used for that, except there are no sidewalks along there. There is very limited shoulder area. I can see a hazard to pedestrians. I can see a hazard to the, especially the cars coming in and out of Common Man Commons right up there as trucks are coming up and down that road. It's, so that's, that's all I have to say at this point. Oh, what I did, there is one other thing, just to note, as far as pedestrians, the comfort in is on the west side of the road and their main parking lot is on the east side of the road. So guests at that hotel do walk, also walk across the road from their cars to the rooms. Just a minor point.
Again, I, I would say that the project does increase that the traffic from heavy trucks into, onto the northern end of West Street. It certainly increases the risk for pedestrians and drivers, especially a Common Man Commons. The extent of that increase, however, is, is, is something that I, I really can't estimate. At this point. Other comments? The proposed use will comply with minimum lot size, frontage and setback requirements.
There is no issue with any of the, any of the requirements?
No, the, the, yeah, the, the court is set way up in the middle of the land. So there's no, there's no problem there. Existing road and highways are capable of carrying the additional traffic. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Again, we keep coming back to the traffic on West Street, kind of over and over. There is a lot of traffic up and down in West Street. The intersection at the bottom of the, of West Street obviously intersects with Route 3 and 25. And it's just a short distance from the, the on and off ramps of 93. That intersection is not a great intersection. It's busy. The cars turning are often not careful who they're turning in front of. Many times I've seen people come down off 93 without really looking and pulling out. So I can see some issues there in the, not just on West Street, but a little extended beyond that. Some possible, some possible additional congestion.
Yeah, I think, I think the applicant has demonstrated that the, the West Street is wide enough to deal with the heavy trucks that would be, and equipment that would be going in and out of there. Susan Slack basically said, the, you know, the same thing that Martine said, that there could be potential problems with the traffic in that area. I'm not sure that we've done a recent traffic study in that area. I think the last traffic study I saw in Ashland was in the summertime. We get about 7,000 cars per day going up and down Main Street. So again, the potential for minor traffic problems in that area. It's also, you know, it's also not the easiest street to turn into if you're coming into town and making a left-hand turn into that area. The other thing I might say is that the upper end or the northern end of West Street. We, let me put it this way, with heavy truck traffic in there, it's more likely that we will have to repave that road more often than, than we have. And I can't remember when the last time West Street was paved. But I, I know that the northern end of that street has not always been in really good condition.
Alan, do you have any input on that?
I do. To me, it's a traffic is, when we're talking about this, is the size of vehicles that are going to be going in and out. For people, I mean, I, I could go into depth here, but I'm, I'm going to try not to. The, the problems are going to arise during the summertime more than any other time of year. Spring and fall probably would not be as hazardous, or you say use that word, travel as it would be in the summer months. It's, it's a best guess, in my opinion, of what potential problems could occur. And I'll kind of leave it at that at the moment.
Apologize for my camera being on a fritz here. I don't know.
That's okay.
But I'm still here.
Good.
And again, I'm, I'm just concerned that because no one has tried to solve these problems, which I agree are issues that need to be considered, that we are passing the judgment as if they're not solvable. And, you know, again, I'm going to point out that this is so early in the process, I, I think, you know, everything I've heard, I mean, certainly it's a problem, but you know, it's something else to say, you can't solve those problems. And again, with a successful, you know, commercial or industrial venture, whatever you want to call it, generating some revenue with the planning board having to determine, you know, just what the, the rules of this engagement would be and the New Hampshire jurisdictions as well. You know, I, I think that to sell this opportunity short because we haven't solved the problems. I mean, I, you know, I, I am an engineer by, by, by experience and education. I don't know if you others are also, but I, I think that the issues being discussed here are well within the realm of engineering and solutions that, you know, could possibly make them work. It's almost activist from a zoning board perspective to make a decision based on problems that no one's had a chance to solve. There is no development that doesn't present problems. The question is, you know, is there other boards and other jurisdictions which will bring to bear on this application the things that are necessary to make it work successfully and deal with the issues that are being raised? I, I just don't see why we want to cut this conversation short at this point, knowing that the special exemption is necessary for, for going forward, for the applicant to have further discussions with the, the appropriate jurisdictions.
I'm going to toss something out here at this point. We do not have to make a decision tonight. Are there some areas in which it would be helpful to have additional information? I've got a few things in mind, but like to get a sense from others. For, as an example, traffic has been an issue that some of us have brought up more than once. Would it be helpful before we make a decision that we ask the applicant to do a traffic study that will look at the impact of heavy gravel trucks on West Street, Route 3 and 25 intersection and on and off and in conjunction also with the Interstate 93 on and off ramps? Would that be useful in helping us make a decision? And that's just one thing I'm thinking about.
Traffic studies are, are a good thing. However, a traffic study just takes a snapshot of what exists presently. I, for one, I am in agreement with some of the other board members who have expressed concern. The only difference is, I, I think those concerns will require changes to, to West Street that are going to make it appropriate for the intended use. So, you know, I think it's two different visions. If you say is West Street right now, you know, a, a good use for, for this applicant, you know, I think it's simple to say, no, it's not. However, I think there are changes you can make to West Street and, you know, discuss who's going to absorb those costs. And I expect it would be mostly the applicant that would result in a better West Street and a West Street more appropriate for the intended uses. So that's, that's the dilemma we have. It's not looking at what exists currently. It's doing the homework, the engineering, the problem solving that says, here's what it could be, here's the cost. And now go back to the applicant and says, now that you know the cost and what you have to do, do you really want to do it? Is the opportunity, you know, economically worthwhile given the costs? Because we want the problem solved, you know, we, we don't want the, the, you know, the, the West Street to be an inappropriate avenue for, for heavy trucks. And we don't want dust and noise interference with the local residents. And we don't want anything to harm the environment around this property. So it's a challenge. And I'm just saying, I don't have any reason not to challenge the applicant and say, these are the problems. When you have a plan and you're going to fix them and you know the cost, come back and tell us if you want to go forward. I, I think that's fair and, and it, it, it's kind of good from everyone's perspective because there are problems there and we, we get to solve them and move forward. And both the applicant and the town ultimately will benefit from that.
There are a lot of specific details that would be under the purview of the planning, planning board if this were to go to that level. They have a great deal of power to set conditions, operating conditions, reclamation conditions, and so on and so forth. The zoning board, what we're dealing with is the, is this piece of land an appropriate site for this use? We don't necessarily get into all the details and yet we need a little bit of that in order to make some decisions, such as, yes, if, if this were to go through and get the approval of the zoning board for a special exception, the zoning board can also put some conditions on that, that approval. And some, and maybe some, knowing some of this other information may enable us to set some appropriate conditions to move forward to the planning board for them to flesh out even in more detail. The other, so traffic study was one thing I was thinking about. Noise study is another big issue that I can see if we're crushing and, and blasting. Noise is a, is of concern, not only noise, but if, if there is a lot of ledge around there, what vibrations are going to be created through blasting? And the third, third area I can see us needing a little more information is some sort of a property value analysis and impact on, its impact on neighboring properties. Would those Would those those areas, traffic study, noise study, and property value analysis give us enough extra data to make a real informed decision on this particular project?
I think, Maureen, you you've said it well. You've outlined what I think is the work the planning board needs to do. I'm somewhat surprised we're here at the zoning board talking about this at this very early stage. I don't know what why this didn't go to the planning board first. I wasn't privy to any conversations like that.
Let me explain that a little bit, Charlie.
Okay.
This piece of land is in rural residential. And in the zoning ordinance, in the definition and allowed uses for rural residential, gravel pit quarry is not listed, therefore it is not permitted. The only way it would be permitted in a rural residential zone is to get a special exception from the zoning board. And in order, so they have to come to the zoning board first to get that special exception to allow that particular use on that particular property. That's the way the state regulations are.
Okay, I mean, you know, I certainly think that's that's it. That's an acceptable criteria. But it doesn't change that the the work really falls on the planning board to answer the the questions that we've all raised here. They are the resource that is going to, you know, call the appropriate experts, engineers, require the applicant to do whatever it is they think it's necessary for the applicant to do. I think my sense is here, the zoning board simply needs to rule on whether or not there could be, under some criteria, a quarry, you know, and that, you know, is that land quarryable? Given that there's lots of problems, whether it ever turns into a quarry is more likely to be determined by the planning board. Because the it's a difficult scenario. There are many issues anytime you propose mining or quarry or as Dave pointed out, an industrial type process. I don't believe the zoning board, I don't think we're smart enough, quite frankly, and don't have the support of the types of experts and things that will really be required to resolve this. So I I think it's an interesting conversation. I think that there's potential here for everyone. And I see no reason that that property can't be a quarry. And will it ever become a quarry? I think the planning board needs to tell us more about that.
One. The applicant earlier said that there was a lot of the planning and design had not been done because the applicant wanted to know whether they were going to be able to get the special exception first before they went to a lot of the design work and so on. And yet there are a lot of times when applicants come before the zoning board for proposals for either variance or special exception. And they do provide us a great deal of information. They have put in a lot of work answering a lot of these similar questions before the zoning board even makes their decision. And I understand, I understand that the applicant is concerned about spending money upfront before receiving the special exception. But at the same time, it has put us in a bind where we don't have a lot of information that I think typically we would have had for determining the special exception.
I know that's that's my feeling, Maureen. And, you know, the problem is is very perplexing because there is a lot of potential there. And Charlie has outlined the potential quite well. However, we are charged with making a decision based on the factual data that's presented to us, not on what the potential of the property is. But but factual data which we don't really have.
That's that's kind of why I was suggesting if we delayed the decision and asked the applicant to provide us some additional information that would give us a better way to make that decision. And it would give us more information to support whichever decision we do make.
Maureen, let me let me ask that.
Yes.
Wouldn't that be the the normal activity of the 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 planning board? I mean, if this came to the planning, let's just, you know, kind of hypothetically say, you know, we agree that this is something that's worthy of a further conversation and we say, yes, it could have a special exception, but it's got the the conditions are it has to meet all the criteria of the planning board. Okay, which are yet to be determined. So then it moves to the planning board and all the questions that now we're talking about in terms of additional information, expert testimony, whatever, and however long that process is, is that the correct venue for that that process? And at the end, it's the planning board by one or two ways. The planning board is gonna say, no, you know, this just isn't gonna work. Or as I would expect, the planning board would say, here are all the costs that the applicant must bear in order to make this proposal right for the community. And then it becomes a question for the applicant, is it economically viable to bear those costs and to move forward in in compliance with what the planning board has has directed? I don't, you know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to to not do work here, but I don't want to do the planning board's work. I mean, they're appropriate, that's the venue for for this type of discussion. I don't know that we're ever going to have enough experts and enough testimony here that's going to resolve some of the issues that that have been raised. I think the planning board is capable of doing that.
The planning, in this type of a venture, the planning board, yes, has a tremendous long list between our ordinance and between a state RSA 155E, which governs commercial excavation sites in New Hampshire. That those ordinances and laws cover a tremendous amount of information everywhere from how the operation is manned as far as time it operates, what it has to do as far as what it is allowed to do on the site, how it can manage the product that it produces, how it can reclaim the land. There is a tremendous list of detail at the planning board level, which will be taken care of. And yes, if we had information, if there were a an impact on on the road, yes, we can put conditions on the applicant and on the proposal at the planning board level. The zoning board can also put some conditions, is allowed to put some conditions on their approval, if that were to be done. But not to not to the extent or to the detail that the planning board would. If the if the zoning board were to have information to say, yes, traffic and the condition of the road is going to be a big issue, then that can come across from the zoning board to the planning board and the planning board can get into all the specifics as to how to to deal with those issues.
Yeah, I think, you know, our discussion has been fairly complete. And the condition in my mind is that the applicant, we will, we will send it through, but the applicant must meet the conditions imposed by the planning board in the final analysis.
Obviously, they will have to, yes.
Yeah, so and we've, I think, outlined what those issues are. I don't know that we can go further than that as a zoning board. Okay, yes, there are things we're concerned about. But not, you know, I guess the way in a judiciary this tends to be handled is, is there a belief that if we grant this the applicant's request for a special exception, is there a belief that on going forward, there could be a successful outcome with the planning board? Could the things that we have raised as concerns be addressed by the planning board and the applicant in a way that would result in the applicant being ultimately successful? And I believe that in in good faith, there is that opportunity going forward and that the planning board and the applicant can sit down and over time and whatever is required, work these issues out and or agree to terminate the process.
I would, I would agree with you, Charlie, except I am very concerned about Common Man Commons. That is a senior residential facility that was built in the rural residential area for specific reasons. And I'm not sure that any, I'm not sure that any of the things that you're talking about. I'm not sure that anything can be done to mitigate the impact that this project will have on Common Man Commons. I just don't see it.
Well, Dave, I would comment, again, in looking at that site, the topography is interesting. It has the potential of creating a barrier because of the the high hill. And barriers are very useful in this type of situation because if that barrier is maintained and, you know, personally, there's there's a natural sound deadening that that occurs with that barrier. And I and I think while maybe it doesn't necessarily resolve the dust issue, I think, you know, there can't be, you know, excessive dust being produced, no matter what. There's going to have to be action taken by the applicant to to reduce dust in general. You know, so, you know, is it solvable is the criteria that I would use it? I don't know. Okay, I haven't engineered it. I just went and looked at it and said, you know what? If there were some clever engineers and they, the applicant was willing to bear the cost of what engineering would require to to resolve this this problem, potentially it could happen without negatively affecting the Common Man Commons, which I agree is certainly something that we need to be concerned about. But it's only one of the, it seems like a number of issues here that are going to have to be dealt with. I just don't know that I'm in a position to say, no, it can't be done. And so therefore, you know, let's let's stop it here and not not let it, the conversation go forward. I think people and, you know, and the Common Man Commons in particular are going to have to be satisfied that the the solution doesn't negatively impact their their interest in in this process. You know, and maybe in the end analysis, it's impossible, but I'm not in a position to say that today. And and so why would we stop that conversation from happening and the appropriate people doing the things necessary to to say, hey, this is what we can do?
Well, I, you know, I I agree with the with the with the potential. I'm not in a position to answer the those questions either. But my understanding is that we have to vote on these specific criterias based on the factual data that we have. And if we do not have enough factual data, then we have to say no.
No, we have to say pending resolution by the planning board as a as a condition of approval. Okay, you know, pending exception by the planning board of whatever ultimately is proposed. That's the condition that that this needs in going forward. And then that planning board now has the ability to walk away from this or they can entertain it and it's gonna be on them to do the necessary homework and figure this all out and or dismiss it if they believe that it's unsolvable.
Would there be additional information for you, Dave, that you'd like to see from those seven criteria? To answer your question, as Maureen mentioned before, if it were to be continued, could you provide a documented list of what you're looking to see to make a more informed decision on that?
Well, I, you know, I have to, I have to understand that this is not going to adversely affect Common Man Commons and the residents of that facility. I think all of the other conditions can be mitigated. You know, I think sidewalks can be put in. I think traffic lights could be put in. I think the entrance to West Street can be reengineered. You know, all of those things, all of those things can be dealt with. I think that that hill may provide a buffer, but I'm not really convinced that you know, that 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 you can that we can protect Common Man Commons. And that's, that's what I really would like to know about. I'd like to know enough to say to Common Man Commons, we are going to, you know, we have information from the applicant that leads us, that leads us to believe that, yes, we can mitigate the circumstances that they are concerned about, at least enough to do what Charlie is saying and send it to the planning board for for further development. I don't really want to stop this project because economic development is really important to Ashland. But so are the residents of those those buildings. They're a long time, a lot of them are longtime residents of Ashland and you know, the Common Man Commons built that building in the rural residential zone. They invested a lot of money in that and there's a certain lifestyle. And don't forget, these people are there 24/7. It's not like they go to work. And so during the time that they're out at work, you're running trucks up and down the street. Yeah, that's one thing. But they're there all day. And that that really concerns me.
I understand. And, Maureen, please correct me if I'm wrong, though. I believe Common Man Commons is in the commercial district, not the rural residential district.
Let me let me take a look at something. Let me pull up. Let's see. I think I'm gonna share the screen with something that I think. Okay, and let me enlarge a piece of this.
I would, I would, I would, I would say that even if they are in the commercial district, they're not in the industrial district.
Sure.
And, and that's, that's the line, you know, that it's, it's kind of a close line. But that's the line that I think I really need more information.
And I, I guess from my point, sorry.
It is. I'm trying to look. Okay, the Common Man Commons property is, I've, I'm sharing a map on the screen. Is, and I'm outlining that it straddles the commercial. It's about half and half, commercial and rural residential.
That is correct, Martine.
Yeah, about half and half.
Yep.
From the information standpoint, um, I, I fully understand your stance on needing to understand what those seven criteria are and how we would meet them. My request would be that what is that satisfactory level? Where you'd be um, willing to accept the application, provided what documentation? Clearly, what has been provided so far is insufficient to your standards, what you are saying. But I'd like to know what threshold we need to go to, to provide that information to you. For you to feel comfortable um with this project and the abutting uses, really. There's, we could, there's obviously several different classifications of uh, traffic studies and noise studies, vibration studies. I, I just don't want to open up a rabbit hole of things where one's provided and then a snowball effect keep coming back.
No, I understand that.
One request, if, if that was the route that the zoning board wants to take.
Um, I, I, I think, um, you know, I, I don't think we're asking you to, you know, do a complete engineering design and study of, of the property. But we want to know, or, or at least I would want to know that there is, there is at least the potential for mitigating these problems that uh, these issues that have been raised by Common Man Commons. So, so traffic is one, traffic noise and operational noise. You know, you just want uh vibration uh from blasting. I think those are dust, those are the main concerns, I believe, that, that were raised. And so we can address those in some factual way and a minimal, minimal factual way. So we could say, look, you know, we're going to approve this because we believe that these factors can be mitigated. And as we pass this on to the planning board, as Charlie said. Or if we do pass it on to the planning board, that, that those issues will, will be part of the final design of the project.
And would this be a document that we will be receiving? With those specific criteria, or are we just still sticking to really the, the traffic uh item number four? I believe, if I can find the other ones.
I wish, I, I wish I was an engineer so I could, I could say, you know, you know, do this, but not this.
Right.
I, I don't know what other members of the board feel. Can we put together a list of, of, of concerns? That we'd like more data on?
Yeah, I think the list of concerns is, is a very appropriate way of proceeding. Before we turn this over to the planning board, I mean, Dave, the, these are the things that people have told us. With regard to the public meeting, these are the concerns that we raise as, as residents. And, and, you know, knowledgeable in the understanding, the, the process. And that list of concerns should be forwarded to the planning board. So that we can be assured and, and, and they can actually become conditional. That the planning board will in fact deal with them and will not proceed further unless there's an appropriate remedy that is proposed.
Um, couple of things I just want to clarify. That this cannot go to the planning board unless we grant a special exception. It cannot skip this step. Granting this special exception would be required before it can even get to the planning board. Also, uh, just keep in mind that once, when we grant a special exception, it goes with the property. And if, even if the owner changes or does not change, that special exception stays with the property. Yes, we can also, not only can we put some conditions on an approval that would, Charlie, as you say, would carry over to the planning board, we could do that. But we could also uh state that if nothing is done within two years, for instance, that the special exception would expire. We can put a time limit on it. But we do, it is important to know that that special exception, if granted, stays with the property. And it stays with the entire property, not necessarily just the proposed location within the center of the property. That special exception is, if granted, goes to the entire property. So the applicant could totally change where they want to put the excavation area.
Well, but whoever, and whenever anyone does something there, Martine's gonna go through the planning board, right? I mean, am I right about that?
Yes.
So, so if the planning board, you know, says, oh no, you know, that wasn't the deal, you, you can't do that. Then, I mean, it gives the town complete control. So I, I'm not worried about it. I, I mean, I, I think you, you, you said it very well just then, that, you know, we're defining the property. And, and that's exactly how I see it. I, I went and saw the property. It's a good sized piece of property. There are rocks on that property. And in my mind, that makes it a potential, a potential site for quarrying. Okay, there is a resource there. It's kind of like if you went into the mountains and found a gold mine, you know, or found gold. You would say, hey, you know what? This could be a gold mine. Well, I, I, I think, you know, when I saw rocks, I said, you know what? This could be a quarry. It doesn't mean it will be a quarry. That's the planning board's job and, and the applicant to, to, to work things out. So that it can be done successfully and, in, in a way that satisfies the, the great interests of, of the abutters and, and, and the townspeople and all that are concerned. Okay, but I, I, I think that's the way I feel. I, I feel it could be a quarry and that's what we're voting on.
I'm not really quite sure that that's what we're voting on.
No.
Not sure we're voting on potential and, and I think we're voting on factual information. That's, that's my understanding.
Yeah.
May I just make a further comment on where we all kind of started with this? As far as the wellhead protection area? And that is my major concern, the possible contamination of our water source. There is a lot of water that comes off that hillside. There are two points of discharge for that water, under northbound ninety-three, southbound ninety-three. Which ends up on Route three, which also ends up directly in the middle of our aquifer. We already have problems with contamination in our well site. I just, I have a real, this is, this is my whole issue on, on this site. I want to make this, what I'm trying to do is make it perfectly clear. I just don't believe that there is anything that can be done that would make contamination not happen. Yes, it has to travel a long way, but it does not take much to contaminate a well source. More than what it is already. Thank you.
The general area that the applicant proposed or said is a potential area is, I'm sharing the wellhead protection area map again. The wellhead protection area is the area outlined in red. And the proposed area that they, for excavation overlaps that somewhat. If we were to look at, I wish, I wish the applicant had overlaid this, this map on their on their site plan. That would have been helpful. But the, the proposed excavation area is, in this area, does overlap the um wellhead protection area. The road that would be put in up along this also travels right along over the aquifer at both ends.
And, and on that, I, my comment would be that, um, yes, that's important as all these issues are important. However, a, a quarry is done well, is a natural process. You're dealing with stone and, and, and earth. Now, I, I mean, if someone was proposing fracking, I, I, I certainly would blow the whistle and say, hey, no. That's not something that can happen there. Now, is it possible to, uh, you know, store, you know, i- i- if they had a storage tank of oil? Or, you know, other contaminating material, yeah, that could be a problem, okay? But the process itself is not inherently dangerous to the aquifer. Again, it's stone and earth. It's a natural process.
That, I, I'm gonna disagree with you, Charlie, because we're talking about equipment. Most equipment has oil in it. You get a leak and it does not take much to contaminate ground, the soil. It, it, it's, it's amazing what a couple of drops of oil will do and it does not go away.
Just one more problem to be solved, Alan, you know, it, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be a process that contaminates. There, there again, we can make requirements of the maintenance of the equipment. Make requirements of, you know, equipment has to be stored on a foundational base that's, you know, not permeatable. You know, you, you've raised important issues as, as we were all doing. But it's different to say that, you know, you, you, you can't solve those problems in, in a way that makes the applicant viable. Again, you know, maybe it'll turn out that, you know, if we get a list on the problems, they're too long. One, you know, the planning board won't want them and or the cost of, of solving them, the applicant won't want to. And, and that's really the best way to, to finish a discussion like this that's so complicated. Is somebody decides that, you know what, you can't get there from here. And, and, you know, it, it, the cost is too high and, and or the number of problems are, are so large and so severe that, you know, going forward is, is gonna be unproductive. But, but I don't know where, I don't know that we're the people to decide that.
Uh, as far as um the part of the process, once, if this were, if the special exception were approved and they come to the planning board. Obviously, I mentioned earlier, uh, local excavation regulations, state excavation laws. Also, they would be required to go through DES because it would require an alteration of terrain permit. Which gets into all of the contamination issues. They require best, at best management practices to manage stormwater, to manage uh any, any contamination uh possibility. That is all part of the alteration of terrain permit. That would be required through DES. So the mitigation um requirements and best practice requirements would be, would be there. At the, that would occur at the planning board level. Okay, I still I still have my, I still have a concern about the traffic and I would, I, my opinion, I would still like to have some traffic study information from the applicant before I, before I move forward. We're dealing with increased volume, especially on the upper level of West Street, the upper end of West Street. We're dealing with um heavy vehicles moving through an area where it's more likely to have pedestrians walking along the roadway. And then, of course, uh, down at the end, coming on to Route three twenty-five and to ninety-three. But I'm, my biggest concern with the traffic is especially at the upper end of West Street.
I, yeah, I understand, I guess, is my, my only concern is to provide the information to satisfy what is exactly what we need to provide? Is it um a traffic impact study that shows the intersection, intersection is sufficient? For the intended use, the intersection needs to have this design for the intended use. Pedestrian safety, there, I understand what you're looking for. But there's the uh details in that, those concerns that I need to understand to properly provide them to you.
Okay, um, the upper half of, upper half of West Street, the northern half of West Street, has limited, I would say the upper half of West Street has limited truck traffic. Most of the truck traffic, for instance, is at the lower end. Ashland Lumber, Irving Station, very little of the truck traffic really goes up to the upper half of West Street. That's where I'm concerned about the volume of, the volume of traffic that you would be adding up in that area. And its impact on uh the other types of traffic that is up there, which is prim- primarily up at that end. It's primarily passenger cars, but also pedestrians. And um, so what, what change in volume of traffic at that upper end is going to, what impact is it going to have? The speed uh and uh turning radius, for instance, of those trucks, a little bit. But uh still to speed up at that upper end, the weight of the trucks, the condition of the road. Where that's, that's what I'm concerned about mostly, is that upper end of West Street. Just as an example, someone mentioned recently, uh, Common Man Commons. Their parking lot is in behind the, the front parking lot on West Street that you see. Right across from the Comfort Inn is the Comfort Inn's parking lot. Parking lot for Common Man Commons is in behind that. In the wintertime, snowstorm, they've got to plow the parking lot. The residents have to move their cars out of that parking lot. And they pull them up onto the shoulders, both sides of the upper part of West Street. You get them out of the parking lot so the parking lot can get cleared of snow. At the end, that may take a couple hours on a winter morning. What's gonna happen if the trucks from the quarry or gravel pit are coming down at the same time? When those cars are parked halfway onto the shoulders? That's, that's, that's a specific example that was mentioned to me recently. And that's why, that's one of the reasons why they're, they're concerned up there with the traffic.
I'm taking notes of all these things. I, I don't, obviously don't have answers to these now, so I don't know if you're expecting response, but I'm just trying to document.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
And the, the only other thing I was concerned about is, is there a way to find out whether the noise, typical noise of a quarry and/or blasting, how is, how far is that going to be heard? Is that going to be heard, Common Man Commons and houses on the other side of this, across the street and the hotel area? Is the noise going to be heard? Is the vibration from blasting going to be felt in that area?
Also, Mardine, the noise from the trucks is, is likely to impact Common Man Commons as well. I know when, when Alan and I were on the, were on Water and Sewer, neighbors complained about the, the septic trucks going up and down the street. The, the noise from the trucks, the vibration from the trucks, the fumes from the trucks, you know, were, were a source of, a, a source of complaints. We did our, our best to try to mitigate that, but and I don't think we, how many trucks do we have going up and down there, Alan? Not, not, not much more than we're talking about here. Maybe 20 trucks a day?
I, I'm going to say equal number or less. We, we, you know, you have to look at the peak volume versus the below end. And the quarry would, in my opinion, be substantially less traffic than what is going into septic receiving on Colling Street. Just my opinion. But you don't know.
What, what, what are the, what are, what are going to be the hours of operation?
That, that is something, that's criteria that the planning board can set.
Right, not in our privy.
Yeah. In fact, we can even establish that in our excavation regulations.
Do we, do we also want, in addition to the information about traffic, do we also want property values?
I'm not as concerned about that.
Okay. I mean, certainly traffic is a major issue for Common Man Commons.
Yeah.
As well as, as well as noise.
So to be clear, you'd be looking for a study that shows either the proposed use wouldn't have a negative impact on the traffic, pedestrian traffic of Common Man Commons as well as the northern portion of West Street. The northern portion of West Street has sufficient capacity for the increase in volume of use, traffic, turning radiuses of radiative vehicle using the road. Vehicles parking on West Street during winter plowing months. I don't know how that one would be addressed through a study. I believe that would be.
Yeah, I, I don't know either.
I don't think that's something that's allowed unless they're missing in the town regulations, unless there's public parking on West Street.
I think, I think probably the broader issue there is the road is has very limited shoulder width. Once you start wintertime with snowbanks, it's going to be tight.
Understood.
Yeah. Probably just in general, the width of the road up there.
Noise, vibrations, noise from the, pre, noise from trucks and vibrations from the quarry would be information you're looking for.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Am I missing anything in there?
I, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
And then Alan, just to address your point, I know aquifer and wellhead was your major point.
And I, and I know what it takes to determine that you, you bring in a, a company to the hydraulics, you know?
Right.
And that's the only way you're going to have a, a better idea of what could happen there with, with runoff. There, there, there's a lot of water on that hillside.
Right.
A lot. You don't see it, but there's a lot of water.
All the way down. I will say the wellhead, there is a wellhead protection section in our zoning ordinance and it does have some of the precautions and standards in there. What would be helpful is if you could overlay the map of the wellhead protection area and the aquifer onto your map, that would be helpful.
Yep.
Does anybody have any other comments at this time?
Could I just make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to, you know, I just want to respectfully ask that the, that the board, as you're looking at this, think about if this was your property or your, or your parents' property that we're talking about. And, and I know that we, we bring up, potentially, there's ways we can get around noise or things and, and, you know, how do we do that? Are we looking at putting up walls that could, you know, how is that going to affect these residents of Ashland who have, who have been, you know, devoted to the town for many years and have chosen this as their place to, to retire? And now the, what we're looking to put in, if there's a way around noise, when we talk about the, the hill that's there, I'm wondering, is that, we're talking about that hill just from the noise impact of what's happening in the quarry, right? And you're not talking about the, the road and the traffic and the trucks in the summertime when, when elderly have their windows down and the noise impact that the trucks and things will have, have no, to talk about the hill and, and the buffer that that creates has no impact on, on any of the road traffic, right?
No, we're also talking about the noise, noise and vibration from road traffic.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just want to assure you, Ryan, that, you know, making sure that Common Man Common is, is protected is a, is, is a major concern. It's certainly my major concern in this project.
I guess I'm just thinking that by, you know, protected and, and, and the life, you know, if we cannot impact the lifestyle as well. So we might be able to protect from things like noise, but, but what impact does that have on, on the residents of Common Man Commons as well?
Yeah, and you, you addressed that in your written statement and we do have that.
Thank you, Kev.
It appears that we, are we, we've asked Daniel to provide us with more information, which indicates that we're really not ready to make a, any decision at this point. If there's no more discussion, I would say we should adjourn.
Okay, we should, before we adjourn though, we should set the date of the next, we need to set the date of the next meeting.
Right.
Make sure.
I was just.
I'm just pulling up calendar.
January 14th, is that it?
It will be, I believe that's it. It'll be January 14th, yes.
Okay, so next meeting, January 14th.
6:30.
The Zoom information will be up on the website prior to the meeting. And I, I don't believe I have to have a motion to adjourn, but.
Oh, you don't, but I, just make it, I think we just need to make clear again for everybody that we are, we are not going to make a decision tonight because we're asking for more information from the applicant.
Is that information, can I provide that to the board ahead of time of that meeting? Or does it, just wanted to make sure I.
If, if you can provide, anything you, anything you can provide ahead of time
Yes.
makes it much easier for us to review.
Just wanted to confirm that was the correct.
Yes, yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank everybody for, for your input on this. And, and thank Daniel for your cooperation. Thank Common Man Commons for expressing your concerns and helping us come to this decision. We will see everybody on January 14th.